Six, 2023, Busiris City Council Meeting. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Weaver.
Here.
Myers.
Here.
Wireball.
Here.
Potter.
Here.
Shear. Spiegel.
Here.
Yeah. I would like to have a moment of silence in remembrance of Mike Corwin, former police chief and a huge supporter of our community and pastor who just recently passed away and is leaving a big hole to fill. Thank you. Before you, you have the May 16th, 2023 Regular Council Meeting Minutes.
Move to approve as presented.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Myers, a second by Mr. Wireball. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You also have the May 18th, 2023 Special Council Meeting Minutes.
Move to approve as presented. Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Myers, a second by Mr. Potter. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Granting permission for visitors to speak.
Vicki Deschamps, 1108, Crestline, Busiris. On April 19th, 2022, council passed ordinance number 17-2022, which approved on a temporary basis the designated outdoor refreshment area application. On December 20th, 2022, council passed ordinance number 64-2022, which approved on a permanent basis the designated outdoor refreshment area application. Page five of the application has a map, which shows the location of where 14 DORA, no alcohol beyond this point, signs were to be placed. As I traveled the DORA boundary today, I located only two such signs. One sign is lying on the ground in front of the Elks Bousars Lodge sign, and the second sign is on Lane Street, where the alley runs between Lane and East Street, but which is not identified on the map for a sign to be placed. To ensure that new beverage is taken outside the DORA boundaries, I would suggest that someone bring the lack of these posted signs to the attention of the Chamber of Commerce or the Crawford Partnership. Thank you.
If I could, that was actually the discussion, that those signs that you saw laying were temporary, and this year they were supposed to purchase those. So Brian, is that something that you want to follow up on?
Thank you.
The old song says, they say we got trouble right here in Busiris City, with capital T, and that stands for theft. Last night on national TV, they named several large stores that are closing facilities because the theft has created such a loss that they can no longer keep those open. Two of those stores they named, or two of those businesses that they named, are located in Busiris, have stores in Busiris. The shoplifting rings are, some of those are very well organized. I had firsthand experience with that back about 25 years ago. The two girls would come in the store every year between Thanksgiving and Christmas, always dressed the same, nurses outfits and long coats. We'd watch them close, we thought, but while I was watching that one, this one I wasn't watching, and when I was watching this one, that one I wasn't watching. Then I looked, and the one had some ties in her hand, and ties have an awkward hanger. You can take off several at a time off of a rack, but put them back, yeah, put them back one at a time. And when I looked back at her, the ties were gone. Well, that triggered a call from me to the Busiris Police Department. The girls, I think, felt uncomfortable at that time. Maybe I gave some kind of a signal to them that they were looking for, that I was observing them better than they thought, and they chose to leave. I watched, got their license number, but the police were already on it. They didn't leave. They came up Sandusky Avenue and turned east on Rensselaer Street, and there was a business there. One of them went into a ladies' shop. Joe Barron, he'll be glad I stated his name, was one of those that came to observe. And he went into the ladies' shop while they were there, and when they came out, I was in a doorway next to that. He came over, he says, well, he says, if you're sure they got your ties, he said, we'll go ahead, we'll wait until they move to get in their car and leave, then we'll pull them over and do the investigation. Well, as the one started to get in the car, lady's clothing fell out from under her wear. And so the police just moved in at that time and arrested the girls and confiscated the car. And I got a call later on that day to come down and identify my ties, and they were there on 15 of my shirts, on three of my men's suits. And how she got those was me watching her that quick, fascinated me. But a long story short, we got into the trial on that, and they had all of us together in the waiting room, one waiting room. And this one fellow came in talking to the one and said something about the store. And I told Captain Stanley, I think if they follow that person, they might find more stolen They found $30,000 worth of stolen goods, over $30,000 worth of stolen goods in Columbus, Ohio, from this ring. The ring went as far south as Florida. And how much they got me for, I don't know, because those same two girls have been in the store for at least five years, maybe 10 before then. And I always thought, they didn't get me. They didn't give me that day either, except for about, what, $5, $6, $700, maybe $1,000 over all that. What I'm asking for is for the mayor to get with the service director and see if you can arrange for some plainclothes folks to be in possibly like maybe Kroger Store, maybe Walmart, anything, one of our big stores. Because the store personnel, what their fare is, is that if they say that this guy in red, white, and blue shirt stole a pair of cufflinks over, off the display, that their attorney will then file charges against that guy in the red, white, and blue shirt for false arrest. And the big stores don't want to pay the cost of fighting those suits, and so a lot of them just don't do anything to stop the shoplifting. The problem with that is, then that person that sits in the big city that says, okay, next year we're going to close two stores, or three, or five. I don't want that to be one of those in Busiris. We worked hard to get Kroger to come back to Busiris, and we worked real hard to get Walmart, came within a whisker of losing them over a dispute between the landowner they were going to buy from and them, got that resolved. And the good news is, we still have our Walmart store, and still have our Kroger store. But let's maybe see if you can have the police show up in plainclothes and just be out there and talk with management. I think they'll be glad to talk with you, but they, they'll probably want to be very discreet about that, because they don't want to get involved in lawsuits. Whereas a police officer, if that person, he or she, sees the activity, then they can go ahead and move in and do it without, then they'll sue the city, but be prepared for that. So from an old habitature that probably lost 30,000 or more over the years to shoplifting, and it don't show up until your inventory, it can be life-threatening. If a Walmart store or Kroger store had something on their shelf that a person had to have because their life depended on it, and it wasn't there, because if it goes through the cash register today, that goes into a mechanism and says reorder this and put it back on the shelf. Whenever the thief takes it, it doesn't get caught until maybe you're into inventory. So it can be life-threatening, and I wouldn't care if you made it a capital crime, that type of theft. That would certainly catch the eyes of the federal judges in the area that come back on Busiris and say, they can't do that. But you can make laws stiffer than existing laws. You cannot make them weaker than existing laws. You can't adjust them to make them weaker. So try what you can do, get it as stiff as you possibly can, maybe hard labor. I'm sure you have stone quarry to get some big rocks out there, and they like to see made into small rocks, and you can give them sledgehammers to help have that happen.
All right. Thank you.
It's just a merchant that would love to see that happen. Any questions?
Thanks, Doug.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Okay, moving on. Communications and petitions? Seeing none. Standing committee reports, plating?
I have nothing at this time.
Public lands and buildings?
Nothing, nothing at this time.
Health and safety?
No report.
Finance?
No report.
Economic development?
No report at this time.
Service?
No report this time.
Traffic commission?
We have no traffic commission to report.
All right.
I do have a comment for traffic commission. I asked Jeff, oh, a couple weeks ago about the lights. You know, I know they go blinking, but now this week, 8:20, I was out, and all the lights are blinking, like out, like everything down Mansfield Street at least, because I went out to Walmart.
8:20 at night, or?
8:20 at night, yeah. It just seems a little early. I don't know. I said something to...
Hobbly and Western was also at 8 o'clock.
Yeah, I said something to Jeff. I thought maybe you missed the time change, because it was shortly after that time change. It may be as simple as that.
Yeah, it could be, but we have folks that managed those, that were coming up in the 10 years, June, so I'll bring it up to Jeff.
Yeah, I think he, I don't know, I just said it kind of in passing. He might have missed it.
I'll make sure it goes out to them.
Thank you.
I do want to make a statement that, tell the company that sealing our streets, by putting those signs out at every intersection, especially for motorcycles, they did a good job. I've seen a lot of the signs knowing about the losing. So I like to make sure they know, whoever put those signs out did a good job, from what I see.
They probably got a lot of complaints over previous years from motorcycle riders.
But that's what I'm saying, I want to say, if our service department did it...
No, they were...
Anybody else for traffic commission? Officer report.
Yes, well, since Mr. McKeever brought that up, Jeff wanted me to mention that folks were in town that were doing the sealing on the streets. Once we paved last year, it's sealed to extend the life of them. That's what he was talking about, so. And Mill and Pave is, I know is going to be starting up this month sometime, just give you a heads up on that. We'll put the, we'll have Bonnie put the streets out again on our website and maybe do a Facebook post on that. So I think that was it, all Jeff that wanted to mention. For Mayor Wilson, I will have a meeting with the chief, police chief. I don't want to go over his head. We'll kind of discuss everything with the police chief on that and then go over that then, just so you know. So thanks for coming. It's good to see you here. Anyway, I attended Busiris High School graduation last month, and that was the first time since COVID. I'd done it every other year, and I want to thank BHS and staff for the invitation to resume this tradition, and hopefully it'll continue with the next administration. And also, congratulations to Superintendent Britton, Dr. Singh, the principal, they're doing a fant, and all the staff, of course. They have excellent news about the graduation rate being increased, so that's fantastic news for our school system, our main school system. Memorial Day Parade ceremony was well-attended, weather was perfect, excellent speeches, everything was so nice as usual. Thanks to all the people that attended and organized it. Swimming pool opened. We had big crowds on Memorial Day weekend. Weather was perfect for an opening, not typical Memorial Day weather, but it worked out. And this week it began to be open on a daily basis. Once again, thanks to the Busiris school system for their generosity in allowing us to open the pool this year. More thanks after I sneeze. Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. Thanks to Good Hope Lutheran Church for sponsoring the first movie at Shines Art Park, and Bonnie Welch, our communications director, got her first movie under her belt, and had a great crowd, a lot of enthusiasm. Next movie will be held July 7th. I think there's six or seven that are planned. There'll be, I think they're on the website right now, so. Car show's this weekend, another huge event. Thanks to the FOP for putting that on. It's a huge event in the city, so hope to see you downtown. You may have noticed the flowers are out, Washington Square, hanging baskets were put up this week, and could have done it without civic involvement. Volunteers that take that project, city obviously doesn't have enough staff or funds to do that, so they raise the money and get people to come and hang them up. Also watering, have to be watered every day. And if you want to volunteer, let me know. Speaking of volunteers, tree commission members have been very busy during this. I think it's been almost a month since we've had any rain. If you've got new trees, any of the cathcart trees, make sure you give them a good watering a couple times a week, five gallons. They typically need water, they're their first planting year, and for very dry years, maybe even second or third year. So keep an eye on your trees. Thanks to all the people that are out spending their time watering their trees. And there's one referral for US EPA consent decree issues, Phase Two, to service and finance.
All right. May I have a motion to send these referrals to service and finance?
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Myers, a second by Mr. Spiegel. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Does Mr. Wagner have a report?
We didn't kind of combine your...
Okay, okay, all right. Thank you. Yes.
If I could, I did have a couple phone calls. Could you see if the service director might reconsider his policy of 2:00 PM for low attendance and moving it to maybe 4:00 PM? There's a lot of people that said that when they get off work, that's when they're going to bring their kids to the pool, they're not going to come out, and they're not going to send the kids out while they're still at work.
We, we, we discussed it this...
Okay, yeah, thanks.
I'll let you know, we'll let everybody know the exact time, so we're inclined to keep it open by here.
Okay. Mr. Law Director?
No official report. Responding to Mr. Wilson, or Mayor Wilson, the city of Busiris, or the Walmart and Kroger both, without publishing their asset protection mechanisms, both are active in protecting their assets, and we don't catch everybody. And I think it's a wonderful idea, you know, to pick the brain of the chief of police for additional input from him. But we do have, both of those employers do have asset protection mechanisms, and we are prosecuting those criminals that steal from our local merchants. And I will say, the, both the common police court judge, as well as the juvenile judge and the municipal court judge, take theft very seriously in this community, and those individuals are sanctioned accordingly. We do not have the chain gang yet, and they're not busting up rocks, but they are, we do, they, the judges and the community take that very seriously. And Walmart and Kroger were the ones that you mentioned, and I know they do have some behind-the-scenes asset protection things that they do employ. And we've prosecuted probably, since I've been prosecuting, you know, two to five people per month, it seems.
Maybe we need those hard knocks. We'll look into that.
Anybody have any questions for Mr. Gerner? Ms. Lewis? Oh, I'm sorry. You need to speak up.
I, it just came to me. I may want to ask you about these motorized vehicles, as in scooters, bicycles, that are not...
Lawnmowers.
Other vehicles that are being used on our street that have no licensing and move at a good pace. Been seeing a lot of them, and been getting a lot of complaints, and I want to know if we should refer that to health and safety.
Yeah, if you make a referral to health and safety, I'll bring some, some things with me Thursday, so we can talk about what we have, what the state has, and what are other options.
Okay. I would like to refer motorized, other motorized vehicles to health and safety.
I'll second that.
I have a motion by Mr. McKeever, a second by Mr. Wireball. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
I'm a fan of the guy that has the gas motor on the, like, Elders Motor System.
Yes, he usually does 45 miles an hour.
Yeah. He can, he can get.
With no lights, right?
No lights, no turn signals, no way of knowing he's coming.
Excellent. The other day.
Anybody else have anything for Mr. Gerner? Ms. Lewis?
The income tax collection for May of 2023 was down 12% or $62,894.90 for May of 2022. That puts us at a total of being down $93,562.49 overall compared to where we were at last year. That was your daily dose of gloom and doom. We have an agreement with the city of Crestline at the beginning of the year. The city of Busiris will receive a $3,000 check for the services from our victim's advocate, Sam Caldwell. We have received that check, and it has been brought in on the revenue side. Now, I would like to refer to finance committee to appropriate the $3,000 into the budget so that the department can access that money for personnel and training. And that's it.
Thank you.
So moved.
Go ahead, hang a whole, hold it.
So just an email, I have an answer for you, to see whatever. So for 2016, 17, 18, 19, and 20, for this month, it's kind of average to where we collected this month. But where it risen in 21 and 22 was really high collections. I mean, I'm not sure why that is, but is there a reason why it's so much higher now we're seeing this? Because we're kind of average, actually, we're higher than all those previous years, except for 21, 22. I was just kind of curious why, why there are these spikes?
I'm not sure. It looks like those years also kind of coincide with COVID, and I know there was a lot of weird income tax things happening at that time. So I can talk to Kelly Schumpf, figure it out, and then email you.
Okay, I'll just look at past history and see if they were kind of on track.
Yeah.
Actually, we're trending a little higher, we're on track before that would have been the number here, so.
Yes, yeah.
Just curious. Thank you.
No problem.
Anybody else have any questions? May I have a motion now?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Myers, a second by Mr. McKeever. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. No treasuries report, no police chief, and no fire, so may I have a motion to accept city officers' reports as presented?
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. McKeever, a second by Mr. Spiegel. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. Granting permission for visitors to speak regarding reports of standing in special committees and city officers. Seeing none. Consideration of proposed legislation for the first time?
Ordinance number 24-2023, and ordinance to approve current replacement pages to Busiris codified ordinances, and ordinance number 25-2023, and ordinance amending and supplementing section 189.084 of chapter 189, income tax effective January 1st, 2016, of title nine taxation of part one administrative code of the codified ordinance of the city of Busiris, and declaring an emergency.
I have a motion to accept this as the first reading.
So moved. Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Wireball, a second by Mr. Myers. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Granting permission for visitors to speak regarding the legislation presented for the first time.
Vicki Deschamps, 1108, Crestline, Busiris. I have a comment on ordinance number 24-2023, which is to approve the current replacement pages to the codified ordinances. Since the replacement pages have already been posted to the city's online codified ordinance website, I believe we should pass this ordinance as an emergency.
I'm content to make that motion when that time comes this evening.
Do we need to revise, and how to rewrite?
They'll need to be, if, if council agrees that that would be proper to do, there's like three different areas that'll have to be changed on the legislation.
Yeah, we agree with you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, consideration of proposed legislation for the final time?
Ordinance number 18-2023, creating section 1187.07, entitled portable shipping containers, storage containers, and similar objects under chapter 1187, entitled additional residential district standards, under title 11, entitled additional zoning requirements, under part 11, entitled planning and zoning code of the codified ordinance of the city of Busiris. Ordinance number 20-2023, amending and supplementing chapter 381, at sequence, entitled taxicab licensing under title 11 licensing, under part 3, entitled traffic code and the codified ordinance of the city of Busiris.
I have a motion to accept these as the final reading.
So moved. Second.
I have a motion by Mr. McKeever, a second by Mr. Myers. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Granting permission for visitors to speak on legislation read for the final time. Seeing none. Referring back to originating committee, proposed ordinance 18-2023, portable shipping containers, refer back to plating. Proposed ordinance 20-2023, taxicabs, refer back to health and safety. Proposed ordinance 24-2023, codified ordinance pages, refer back to finance. And proposed ordinance 25-2023, .25% all workers, refer back to finance. Committee report on pending legislation, plating?
Plating is favorable to propose ordinance 18-2023, the portable shipping containers.
Health and safety?
Health and safety is favorable to propose ordinance 20-2023, the updated taxicab legislation.
Finance?
Finance is favorable to proposed ordinance 24-2023, the codified ordinance pages, and is also favorable to proposed ordinance 25-2023, the .25% all workers. is also favorable to propose ordinance 25-2023, the .25% all workers.
Further consideration of pending legislation? Ordinance number 18-2023. I have a motion to adopt.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. McKeever, a second by Mr. Myers. McKeever?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Wireball?
Yes.
Potter?
Yes.
Sherrick? Spiegel?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Ordinance 18-2023 is duly adopted. Resolution 20-2023?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. McKeever, a second by Mr. Young. McKeever?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Wireball?
Yes.
Potter?
Yes.
Sherrick? Spiegel?
Yes.
Resolution 20-2023 is duly adopted. Ordinance 25-2025, I'm sorry, ordinance 25-2023. For the second, third readings, the proposed ordinance 25-2023, do I hear a motion to suspend the rules, waive the readings of the caption and text, and declare an emergency?
So moved.
Second.
Was that Mr. Spiegel?
Yes.
I have a motion by Mr. Spiegel and a second by Mr. McKeever. Spiegel?
Yes.
McKeever?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Wireball?
Yes.
Potter?
Yes.
Sherrick? Young?
Yes.
Do I hear a motion to adopt proposed ordinance 25-2023?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Young, a second by Wireball. Young?
Yes.
Wireball?
Yes.
Potter?
Yes.
Sherrick? Spiegel?
Yes.
McKeever?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Ordinance 25-2023 is duly adopted. I apologize. And we've got... Yes, sir. We are going to recess at 7:32. Forty, 7:42. I do apologize. It's been a very long day today.
Glasses on?
Glasses are on. I have my extra pair here if I need them. In regards to ordinance 24-2023, the ordinance to approve current replacement pages for the Bucyrus codified ordinances, for the second and third readings, or do I need, can I just go ahead and read it? Go into it? Okay. For the second and third readings of ordinance 24-2023, do I hear a motion to suspend the rules, waive the readings of the caption and text, and declare an emergency?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Myers, a second by Mr. Potter. All those, I'm sorry. Roll call? Myers?
Yes.
Potter?
Yes.
Sherrick? Spiegel?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
McKeever?
Yes.
Wireball?
Yes.
Do I hear a motion to adopt proposed ordinance 24-2023?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Myers, a second by Mr. Spiegel. Myers?
Yes.
Spiegel?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
McKeever?
Yes.
Wireball?
Yes.
Potter?
Yes.
Sherrick. Proposed ordinance 24-2023 is duly adopted. Do we have any old or unfinished business? Any newer miscellaneous business?
Madam President?
Yes, sir.
With the announcement that our council clerk will be leaving us, I'd like to thank her for the time that she's already given to us, and also thank her ahead of time for the time she's going to continue to give us as we search for her replacement. But I would like to make a motion to create an ad hoc committee to handle searching for her replacement made up of yourself, Madam President, myself, councilperson Sherrick, as well as Ms. Vicki DeShawn and Mr. Zion Hickman.
I have a motion by Mr. Myers to create an ad hoc committee to, excuse me, seek a replacement for Council Clerk Zolovic.
I'll second that.
I have a motion by Mr. Myers, a second by Mr. McKeever. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
And I would also like to request that that committee have a meeting scheduled immediately following the regularly scheduled committee meetings on this coming Thursday.
Or at 7:00, whichever comes first.
Sure, if that's the way it needs to be worded. Yes.
All right.
You're talking about this Thursday? Yeah. Is Erin going to be here this Thursday?
She should be.
She should be.
I've not heard any different.
Okay. I'll just double check.
If not, we'll address that. I'll contact her tonight. So I have a motion by Mr. Myers to hold the committee meeting this coming Thursday after the ad hoc committee meeting for hiring after the regularly scheduled committee meetings for 7:00, whichever comes first.
I'll second that.
I have a motion by Mr. Myers, a second by Mr. McKeever. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Do we have any newer miscellaneous business? All right, may I have a motion to excuse Ms. Sherrick?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Potter, a second by Mr. Spiegel. All those in...
Nope, Mr. Young.
I'm sorry. A second by Mr. Young. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We have...
Madam President?
Yes.
I also have, I meant to bring the letter with me tonight, and I neglected to bring it, but could I make a referral before we adjourn?
Yes.
I'd like to refer the Bratwurst Festival street closures to health and safety, and I'll have that letter Thursday. I'll second that.
I have a motion by Mr. Myers, a second by Mr. McKeever. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You said health and safety, correct?
Yes.
All right. So the other referrals I have are the US EPA consent decree phase two to service and finance appropriations for the Crestline victim's advocate to finance. I didn't write it the way you said it, but I put motorized modes of transportation to health and safety and Bratwurst Festival to health and safety for the street closures. Do we have any other referrals? All right, I'll entertain a motion adjourned.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. McKeever, a second by Mr. Spiegel. We are adjourned at 7:47.